Everybody ready? Good morning. Good morning. We'd like to welcome everyone out to our Halloween version of a Mesa City Council study session. Hopefully, things won't be too scary today. All of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda for Monday's formal city council meeting. So please refer to that document, council. Anything in particular that people would like to hear a presentation on or have questions Currently, there are no items off of the... Before I say that, no, there is. There's a zoning case off of the consent agenda. Any questions or concerns about anything on the consent agenda?
Mayor, just on that, those zoning cases, it'll have to be made clear by council, especially when we have a... Was it 9A? Were the votes 3-3? So what are the motion we need to get direction? Just supporting the previous action will need a denial or approval from the council direction.
Right. Because there's no obvious recommendation from P&amp;Z.
Yeah, you'll need to give us... We can't just approve it as is. We'll need one direction to the other.
Okay. Frankie?
Wondering, 4J, baseline road improvement. What's the timeline on that project?
Good morning, Mayor and council. Happy Halloween. So actually, we're coming to a close right now. We put down base course on the Valvista section south of the 60 last weekend. This weekend, we get the finished course. The section on Lindsay and baseline comes up a week after we finish the PMTR on Valvista. The section on Lindsay will be really interesting to watch. That's actually a recycle project. Both of them are recycle. We're just doing them differently. And we have a long train that we bring out that's about half a football field long. So it will go very fast when we do it, but it will be done in about three weeks.
Other questions regarding Monday's agenda? And Mr. Brady's point's well taken, so when we do vote on the zoning case, we just need to make sure at that time whether we're approving or denying the zoning case, not the recommendation or lack of recommendation from P&amp;Z. Okay. If there's nothing else on Monday, shifting to item 2A for this agenda is to hear a presentation on the Mesa City Center project, including ASU, the plaza, and the studios. We've got good crew.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Today, we wanted to... You have an agenda item coming up for the November 4 meeting for the first GMP for this project, which is the site utility work. Since we had a first agenda item for ASU, we thought we'd give you an update on where we stand. So today, we're going to talk about an update on ASU, the building itself, the plaza as well, the studios, as well as intersperse that with some discussion of the GMP throughout. Today, I have with me Rick Neymark, who is the Associate Vice President for Program Development at ASU, as well as Jake Pinholster, who is the recently-named founding director of ASU at Mesa City Center. Both Rick and Jake have been intimately involved throughout the design and program development process, but we thought we'd kick off today with Jake giving you kind of an update on where he is with the development of the academic programming for the building.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and council. Thank you for having me back. Just real quickly, I don't want to take up too much of your time this morning. And then, of course, I jump into it early. Just a quick... We've had a lot of questions as we talked with members of the community and across the valley about the uses of extended reality and immersive technologies for things other than entertainment and gaming. So we put together a short video that, just a minute and a half long, that I want to just show really quickly to look at some of those applications. All right. So as you'll sort of... We hinted at at the end of that video, our mission with this new facility and the programs to go into it is to create a place where we can do integrative research, but also curricular learning, workforce development, and community engagement using the technologies from extended reality and beyond. This is early in this process for us because of faculty governance of curricular programs, but... And so some of these names may change, but just a quick overview of the kind of general student body that we present in this building, one of which is the BFA Film and Media Production, which already exists, and then this sort of trinity of graduate degree programs that we're building in concert with School of Engineering, the School for Future Innovation and Society, that will basically be folks who are coming from an engineering background, who will be coding, making technologies, people who are designers and making aesthetics and understanding experience, and then people who are understanding futures and understanding data. The little teal circle on the right-hand side is also a new undergraduate program that's being developed at the university. It's a cross-university program called the Bachelor of Science in Technological Leadership. We expect that they'll have some capstone experience stuff going on in this building as well. We really want to focus... We've been focusing early. I'm in the middle of hiring a staff person right now that will be... Take the lead in community engagement. I'm hoping to attract someone from Mesa directly. We've done some heavy recruiting in the community. And just giving a sense of all the things we're working on developing in terms of community engagement, collaborative projects, which I'll talk more about in just a moment. We're working with the MAC on events and festivals, as well as the IDM Museum, youth continuing education, frequent movie screenings, which I'll talk about more in a second. And then also, we want to make sure this building works together with the studios project on doing venture incubation collaboration. So just to look at this graphically, there's a relatively recent ground plan of the building, although it's forever-evolving. Looking at the public spaces in the building, we have the screening and movie theater spaces, so including the plaza site, which will face the screen on the exterior of the building, the cafe space, the exhibition gallery space, which is essentially the entire lobby slash breezeway, the community room, community meeting room, and the enhanced immersion studio, performance space, which overlaps that significantly, collaboration and ideation space. So this is all spaces that we plan to have some community access to and/or priority among... In terms of community engagement. Community meeting and education, so there's one room that's specifically focused on the community as a community space, as a primary function. Special events, which will essentially be the entire building and the surrounding environment. Just to start thinking about this, it's always three-way engagement. So we always want to be... We're trying to do everything we can to make sure all of our programs look at both the academy, the community, and industry together. We have elements in which we're engaging some of them more than others, but the list of folks that we're talking to already and have started to develop programs around is pretty extensive and will only grow from here. And this is the fundamental challenge. So this is slightly different than the way... Very different from the way most universities do things, and even slightly different than the way that ASU tends to do things. There's this tendency to put curriculum and curricular activities in one box, research in another, and community engagement kind of separate from both. And sometimes you get overlaps of two, but generally speaking, never the twain shall meet. With this building, the central challenge that I'm taking on with the larger university team is how do we make sure that's all that's fundamentally integrated, so that we're doing stuff that involves an industry partner working in and with the community, bringing new industry partners into the community, and then working with researchers and students to create new worlds, you know, new technologies, tell new stories. So some examples, just really quickly, these are hypothetical at the moment, but are based loosely on conversations we've had so far. So the possibility of ASU Mesa Public Schools, a company called Live at Labs, which is based out of the valley, that's a VR for education, and Oculus, which is a manufacturer of VR technologies, getting together and starting a laboratory for VR education, working with Mesa Public Schools to bring new STEM experiences into the classrooms that wouldn't be possible with normal classroom equipment. Working with Boeing, who's already expressed a little bit of interest in this, ASU, Mesa Maricopa Community Colleges, particularly the ITI across the street, as well as NAU, to do one of the most transformative things that's gone on around the world at some of our peer institutions is the use of XR for emergency response and preparedness. It's actually one of the strongest areas of application for VR, because there's almost nothing that will train you for emergency preparedness more than actually having the experience. And the closest you can get to having that experience without either expensive simulations or being in an emergency is VR. And then finally, hypothesize this collaboration between ASU, Intel, Real Mesa, and Mesa Arts Center to create smart art around the community sculptures and installations that also act as sensors for motion, temperature, and traffic, so that you get better data for understanding how things flow around the city center, as well as creating an aesthetic experience. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Luna.
Hey, Jake, are you planning to work with anything related to biomedical technology and working with the nursing programs at both MCC and at ASU?
That has... Those collaborations have not come up specifically, but we do understand that biomedicine visualization of like healthcare environments is definitely a strength. We have had early conversations with Banner Health about being a collaborator on that side, but we have not met with MCC specifically about that yet.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Thompson?
I'm fine with the programming. My concern's more with the aesthetics of the facility itself, of the building itself, and just looking at... What slide is this? I don't know. I can't figure out which slide it is. If you keep going back to where it shows the profile... Keep going.
One of the first slides.
Yeah, it's one of the very first slides. That one. It kind of looks just like a present building with a big-screen TV on it. And I was hoping for a little more wow. I know that even back in 2016, when this came to us, the conceptual design of this was that wow factor. Now, like I said, it just looks like a present cell with a giant big-screen TV stuck to the side of it. And I've seen some of the folks in the community talking on social media about this, and I kind of agree with them. We, you know, if this is going to be our downtown, we need that wow factor in our downtown. So what can we do aesthetically to dress this up so it has that wow factor?
Want me to talk about it or not? Hi. Nice to see you all again. I just want... This is not a rendering of the building here. This is... I don't know what you call this kind of a drawing, but first of all, let me introduce, we have our architects here in the audience who were selected by the City of Mesa with our involvement as well. Steve Chato is here from BCJ, and Diane Jacobs from Holly Street Studios. And they teamed up together. Holly Street is a local firm, and BCJ, this is their office out of San Francisco, and they've designed these kinds of facilities all over the place. And both of them are incredibly accomplished architects and have done amazing, amazing work in all of what they've done. Jeff has a presentation that's going to show a little more of the design and the renderings for the building and you'll see... And the materiality. So you'll get a chance to see more of that. This is not... That's not a rendering of the building, number one. Number... Okay. Number two, we're not done. We have... We're scheduled to go to the Design Review Committee in a few weeks. We have a workshop that we're going to have next week on Wednesday to invite the community in to give us input, additional input on the design. We had a big community meeting on April 24th where we asked people, what do you want to see in this building? And we got a lot of great input, and the building has been informed by that. And we're continuing to take input and get ideas to make it the best thing it can be. Now, that being said, Jake described, as we went through the design process for the building, the building has, in order to deliver the programs that we're talking about, that we've talked to you about, the building has a lot of very large-volume, very technically sophisticated spaces. And the way they stack up is much more horizontal than vertical, although, you know, people say, why is it only three stories? But in fact, it's a lot taller than your normal three stories. We have one space in this building that's, what, 45 feet, which is, I think, one of the largest enhanced immersion studios in the world. So this place, you're going to be able to fly drones in it to create total immersion. So, you know, I don't want to apologize for the way the building is. It has to be the way it is to be able to function. But you'll see that the exterior design and the way we invite the public in and the way Jake talked about is going to be spectacular. It's going to be a great addition for the community.
That's great. I look forward to those presentations.
Yeah. And then I just want to mention while I'm at it, and then maybe we can let Jeff go through his piece of the presentation to talk a little bit about it, but... Well, first of all, I just want to say, I just celebrated my fourth anniversary at ASU. And in my first month, the mayor called us in to say, hey, what can ASU do in downtown Mesa? Now, as you know, we've been through a lot over this time period, but it is very exciting to be at this point where we've got a design now that really reflects the best of what we can do. It's been a tremendous collaboration, and I want to just compliment the city manager, the city engineer, Jeff, and all of the staff who've been working with us, because I've been on the other side of that when I was at the City of Phoenix, on the other side of that partnership, and it takes a lot to make that work as a well-oiled machine, and they have done a fantastic job of managing this. So I can't say enough about the good work everybody's done getting us to this point. I just want to mention one other thing as part of our exploration. So when we started this, we had ideas, we had a sense of a cost, we did an early study and brought a budget to you, but as we got into the design of this, one of the things we learned a lot about is the technical sophistication necessary to make this thing work. And so, you know, we've got these large-volume spaces, technically sophisticated, sound-isolated, vibration-isolated, and, you know, housing this large technical equipment that needs to be suspended from all over the building. And then you have control rooms and sound rooms and editing bays and all of the complex equipment involved. President Crowe made me go to Asia and Australia to look at installations there with Jake's dean, because we wanted to make sure we had the world's best, latest technology in these buildings. And I assure you, this is going to be really a fantastic thing, and it's going to put us on the world map for these kinds of programs. So we are really excited about it. President Crowe has also challenged us to connect our program to our LA building, and so we're going to have the first film school that's in many places. And we already have some film activities in LA, but basically, there's going to be a direct connection. And the importance of LA, obviously, to the film and entertainment industry is huge. And so it is going to be... And LA is such a global city, so that connection between here and LA will be really important. And then I just want to underscore the importance of this for industry. When we were in Australia, we saw a presentation about how the mining industry... And, you know, Australia's a lot like Arizona. It's got a lot of mining. How the mining industry was using this technology in partnership with the university to develop these safety programs for miners. And you get real-life experiences. What do you do when you see this crack or this boulder fall out of the wall? What's your next move? And it was unbelievable. So I'll leave it at that, but we are... We're excited about this, and you'll see that this is a spectacular building. So Jeff, I don't know if you're ready for him to go, but he wants to talk about several things, but yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Before we hear from Jeff, any other questions from council? Thank you, Jeff. Take your weight.
All right. You would think that we practiced this, but you might hear a little bit of overlap. But I'm going to start with just some of the background details, where we stand on timeline, budget, things like that. Right now, we are truly in the final stages of design. We only have two or three weeks left before final design of the building is complete. We are scheduled for design review for the building architecture and landscape design November 12th, and that will be... Design reboard is an approving body in that case. Our intention is to actually start site work on the utilities in the next three weeks or so, so mid to end of November, with actual construction on the ASU building starting in February. We will intend to... Plan to complete the building in October 2021, which gives ASU three or four months to be able to fit out the building with all of their equipment, so that they can start classes in January of '22. The budget of the building, as I think many people probably expected, has grown. It is now a total budget of $73.5 million. The city's commitment has remained exactly as council approved at $63.5 million. The difference here is that ASU has had to come to the table and bring $10 million to the project itself for the building. Now, that $10 million is in addition to the $10 million that they are committed through the lease and IGA to actually do the FFNE and build out the interior of the building. As part of GMP number one, there's an additional $2.1... I'm sorry, $2.4 million in supporting infrastructure budget that goes to electric water, wastewater, IT for fiber, and some transportation. As Rick alluded to, this is a... This is a building that the interior and what happens inside the space informs the exterior design more than you would normally expect. The image on the left shows those large-volume spaces that Rick described. So the production studios, there's three red production studios. The darker red, more maroonish color is that very large enhanced immersion studio that's 45 feet in clear space in height. And then on the far left, the blue space, that is a large screening room, I think around 250?
280.
280, something. Screening room that will be used a lot for the public screenings. But all of those spaces, a key thing to note about, all of those spaces, they don't want to have light and air come through them. They need to be dark, and they need to be closed off. So that informs the architecture to a great deal. So you start to see how that presents itself. We gave our design team a real challenge here, and I echo Rick's sentiments. They've done a great job of being able to provide a building, present a building, design a building that is aesthetically pleasing and very nice. I think when we get into some of these other renderings, you'll see that they've done a great job of being able to give us an architecturally attractive building while still meeting the programming needs for the interior of the building. Now, this is a view looking towards that screening room and from the plaza space. And you see that the intent is to really make that ground floor very transparent, to really invite the public into the building. And you also see that the building almost looks like it's two halves. There's a... On the left side, it's the more public-facing side, so that's where the cafe space is on the first floor. That's where the screening room is. There's also a smaller screening room above that. And then going to the right, to the east, you'll start getting into the more academic side, but still at the ground level, it's very transparent to bring people in and through the site. This is taking a look, looking east at the base of the building, along Pepper. And what this is trying to show you is how transparent that space is. So the space on the left that you see inside the building, that is actually a flexible space. So for public events, that could be opened up as a place for holding an event, but also at the same time, it could be an academic space for programming for the programs inside the building. This is a look as if you're right in the middle of those, what I would say, the two different buildings. And so this is, on the left-hand side, that's the cafe space. So this is a public cafe. This is something that will be available to all of us to go and have our lunch or snack. And it will be something that we work with ASU and their food services program to actually find a tenant and fit out the space. What this is also showing is what we... The passageway through the building. So this is a very highly-programmed space, but it's completely open to the public. So once this building is complete, all of us, as we're walking from Mesa City Plaza over here to the council chambers, we'll be walking right through that space to get to the back door of this building. And on our walk, we'll get to interact with some of the art that Jake's students are producing within the building as well. That'll also be the place where we go when we go for film screenings, where we'll gather before going into the theater. Now, this, I will note that this is one area that we're still working on design. I think, actually, right after we get done today, we're heading down to ASU to do a design share just on that very space itself, to make sure that it's being designed as best as possible, so that it truly is an inviting space, that the public feels welcome to come through and interact with the art and use it as essentially a passageway. We are getting far enough along in design where we can start to... Where the architects are start to help visualize the interior of the building. So what this is showing is on the left is the large screening theater, the 280-seat theater. On the upper right is the smaller screening theater. That one might have... It will have public events involved, but you'll see that be more of the academic side, where they'll actually be doing like final production of their films, things like that inside that space. And then on the bottom right, that's starting to get you an idea of how big that enhanced immersion studio is. So that is a huge volume. I wish I had off the top of my head what the actual dimensions were around, but it's a couple thousand square feet by itself.
3,400.
It's 50 by 50 by 45 feet.
So it's very big space.
That's also a space, by the way, that people... In fact, I think you can see it in that little drawing, that there's chairs in there. So sometimes, that's just going to be used internally by the schools to develop things or to set up or whatever, but it has giant elephant doors on both sides of it, basically. So it opens up to the rest of the building, and you can sort of pass through it for experiences, or again, the public will be able to come in and be seated either in bleacher-style seating or in chairs or whatever. It's a very flexible space for presentation of really incredible immersive experiences. And so that's really the goal.
It's a hybrid black box theater slash research lab slash gallery space.
The other aspect of this design is that we want it to function well day and night. So there's been specific consideration given to how this building presents at night. This is a view as if you were on the event lawn in the plaza, looking and watching whatever's being displayed on that large screen. Now, most of the time, what's on that screen is probably going to be a display of the type of work that the students are doing inside the building, but sometimes, you know, it might be a film screening during Merry Main Street in Ice skating rink. We could potentially have Christmas movies showing on there, so that you get multiple experiences while you're at the park. But while this is showing a nice purplish-red glow, the intent is also that this building is going to be kind of living, so that the colors that you see there, the patterns of the lighting, that can change as well based on how Jake and his students are actually programming the outside of the building at the same time.
And just to be clear, the students will help create content, but the programming will be decided by a joint committee of community members and ASU folk. So the students are not deciding the programming. They're just helping make it.
And if we want to stop, I'm going to move on to the plaza next. If we wanted to stop here for any questions on architecture? Keep going? I'm sorry. All right.
Well, if you don't mind, I do have a quick question on lighting. I think a lot of us go frequently to conventions, you know, with National League of Cities and US Council of Mayors, and lighting and architecture seems to be a real developing field, and there's a lot of, you know, iconic buildings across the country that have kind of been redone with interesting lighting fixtures. And we're always pitched, oh, hey, let us come to Mesa and light something up for you. And I'm thinking, well, I'm not sure what we would have you light up. That's not putting Mesa down, it's just we don't have a bridge or we don't have a... Something like this. And so lighting is something we really need to talk about, right? Because it's not just turn on the lights and turn off the lights. There's colors, there's patterns, there's all kinds of things you can do with lighting. So I'm just curious to... And I appreciate that you've spent a lot of time thinking about that. But yeah, particularly when the public interacts with this building, it might be frequently at night, because we want to activate the courtyard. We have a lot of festivals, as you know, in downtown Mesa. The opportunity... The opportunity to have viewings of films on the building and invite the public is one of the big, you know, community amenities attached to this building. So can you talk, and I'm wondering, maybe even the City Plaza building, at some point, we might want to incorporate into the lighting.
So Mayor, we have a whole lot to show you, that we'll have a lot of that incorporated. We can speak to the building. We're still working on the plaza, but that's one of the main things we talked about is over the ice rink, having a cover that lights up and lighting going through there. So do you want to speak to the building itself? Because I think we have those drawings now.
You can kind of see it here, actually, in this, in this rendering. You can see some lights that we're thinking about in terms of around the window areas there. We obviously don't want it to detract from, if you're showing a film. But in addition, the big box on the left, which is the theater building, which has to not have windows because it's a theater building, right? You can see that purple glow. That is intended to represent, we're looking at some LED solutions, low-res, possibly programmable, colors changing, that kind of thing for that building. We're looking at a bunch of different opportunities for that. So this building itself, even without the screen, will be lit up at night, will be change, most likely the lights will be changeable color and even possibly patterns or artistic, you know, getting students to design an interesting artistic thing on the, on the piece of the building to the left where it's changing and evolving over time.
Great. That's what I was hoping you were going to say, and I'll look forward to learning more about that. So yeah, please proceed.
Next, I'd like to talk, give you an update of where we are on the plaza. The plaza is lagging just a little bit behind on design, and that's intentional since construction on the plaza is going to start about a year after this construction on the ASU building. We are still targeting November of '22 for the plaza construction to be complete. So Merry Main Street in 2022 will be the first year that we'll be able to use the integrated ice rink that's down on the center bottom towards Main Street. In addition to that, you'll see some, some thin lines that are, they're highlighting there. That's kind of to give you the indication that we're still working on the design, but that'd be an integrated shade structure that would go over the top of that entire space so that when we aren't using it as an ice rink for, for the 10 months of the year, that it's going to be a usable outdoor space for the public as well. We also have a fountain incorporated into the site that's just north of that ice skating rink area. And then we have the large event lawn that is set up just perfectly so there's a spot. And we'll, we'll mark it with a flag for everybody once it's done so that you know exactly the perfect spot with the best viewing angle of that, of that large screen TV. This will be a nice space to walk through as you're heading towards the, you know, the library or the amphitheater convention center to go north through the site. And right now, the plaza budget is at eight, just over $8 million, and that's from the voter-approved bonds from 2018. For the GMP number one that you have on your Monday agenda, there is approximately $940,000 in supporting infrastructure. This is an initial rendering of the plaza, as if you were standing at the base of the east side of the City Plaza building, looking north towards the ASU building. So you can start to get a sense of the lushness of the space. And on, just over here on the right, you can see some white, some white bars coming up. That is the edge of the shade canopy that is, is going to be over top of the rink. We are still working on that design, so I look forward to having an update on the design in the, in the future.
One of the things that we're really fortunate to have is that the designers for the plaza are the same team that's designing the building. So they're really being connected as one, and it's, that's a very important aspect.
So next, a quick update on where we stand on the Studios project. As a reminder, that is our former IT building that's just to our east here. The intent of this is to, is to be the, you know, the front door of the Downtown Innovation District, the place where, where we can have collaboration between students, entrepreneurs, the corporate world. You know, the place where Jake's students, when they're done with, done with, done with their day in the academic building, can come over to the Studios building and start to maybe ideate even more of their ideas, maybe make connections with, with the corporate world or go to an event on innovation or entrepreneurship. We're going, we're, we just have our, our design team under contract actually this week. So we'll be working with Gensler Architecture. Our intent is to have the design done in spring of next year, and we'll start construction in, in fall, winter of 2020 with completion around the same time as we're completing the ASU building itself. The budget for that building is $8 million, and we are going to be looking at phasing, depending on how it works out for building out the space. And with GMP number one, there is around $270,000, the supporting infrastructure budget. I will also note on this that, that we are working closely with ASU's entrepreneurship and innovation programming. They will be, the intent is that they will help us to determine and build the programs that will happen in this space, but they will also work with us kind of almost as a program manager after the space is built out to actually provide some of those public events and to help program the building and keep it active throughout the, throughout the day. Now, finally, since we are out there doing a lot of infrastructure work as it relates to ASU, the plaza and the Studios, we thought that this is the appropriate time to also do some additional infrastructure work since, since we're going to have the road, Pepper Place all torn up, since we're going to have the parking lots all torn up, we can also get some additional improvements to the site. A lot of, a lot of the additional improvements are related to system safety and reliability upgrades. A lot of that is related to the electric utility. But we also have a little bit of additional conduit that we can put in the ground now that would help us serve future development on the site that's been envisioned by the master plan in the future, you know, possibly additional ASU building, but also there are two private development sites that we had identified on, on the master plan. There's a small amount of money for street resurfacing, and that's essentially that after we cut open the street for the electric utilities, the water and wastewater, it's just resurfing the street back. There is also around $200,000 in IT, public safety IT fiber loop that has been, being installed. And this is a CIP project that was previously approved and funded through Public Safety Bonds. So in addition, and so in total, we have about $1.95 million in additional infrastructure improvements. So a total of the GMP number one is about $5.6 million. And with that, I, we're happy to take any questions. Now, I'm sorry, this is a, this is a bird's eye view. If you're above, sitting above, essentially hovering above the Art Center campus, looking north towards the convention center. The Studios are there, they're just, and this, this points to the actual height of the building. It's a three-story building, but it's 60 feet tall or almost 60 feet tall. So it's equivalent to a five or six-story building. So the Studios are there, they're just kind of hidden behind. Councilmember Freeman, or Vice Mayor Freeman, I'd like to point out that that entire rooftop is covered in solar, as well as if you see the park building down on the lower right, that rooftop is all covered with solar as well. And we are working with, with the energy resources to, to develop an RFP for a purchase power agreement to actually get those solar, that solar installed.
Thank you. Jen?
Yes, I have a few questions and comments. How about the materials itself on the building? Is it a sustainable material? Is it going to be LEED-certified building or?
Yes. The, the, this will be LEED-certified. This will be designed to LEED standards and go through the certification process.
Okay. Will there be any changes, Jeff, to the exterior of the IT building for the Studios?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, the, the exterior of the Studios building should have very minimal changes to it when you look at that screening block that's on the face of the building. However, based on the placement of this building, the ASU building, the wavy canopies that are on the back of that building will have to be removed and relocated, redesigned, and put somewhere else. We, those are, those are something that, those wavy canopies were designated as important elements as, under the historic landmark designation. So we've had an initial conversation with Historic Preservation Board to introduce that idea to them. They are comfortable, as long as we are going to be able to reincorporate those canopies into the site in some way, whether it's as a landscape element or whether it's a shade element. And we are going, our architects for the Studios, Gensler, their, their first charge is to find the solution and come up with concepts for those wavy canopies because the construction timeline is such that, that we'll have to find that solution so that we can get this building under construction soon.
Great. I'm glad you're doing that. So I think, going back some slides, I think the completion date was like October of 2021. When is the interior, the tenant improvements or whatever that appropriate term would be going to start or occur from ASU's, you know, standpoint?
So there, Councilmember Duff, there may be some actual overlap between our construction and when ASU's contract for the FFNE and fit out of the building happened. So it could start in the fall of 2021. But in October, for sure, it'll be ASU fit out of the building for the next three months so that by January of 2022, the building is fit out and ready to go for classes.
So there will be some overlap, definitely at that point. Also, I just wanted to make just a couple of comments more for, you know, the public that are watching and very interested in the space. We're all very excited. I've seen some of the material samples. There's more dimension than it looks like on, it looks very flat, but the materials themselves have texture, there's inset, there's a lot of depth. And one of the exciting things about this building is because of its interactive use and in the engagement that we have with the public and how it's going to end function, it's going to be an absolutely exciting place with a lot of energy and stuff around it. So we can look at buildings typically just by the face of the design, which I happen to like this design, and, you know, I know that others might have other opinions and stuff like that. But I want, I'm more concerned about what's going on with it, how it interacts with the public, what is, you know, that is, you know, of course, a good architecturally designed building. But this is more interactive than any piece of architecture we usually looked at because of the technology that's going on and around it. And so that will define the building as much as the architecture. So I wanted to tell that to, my opinion on, to the public. And their input and, and ideas about that are welcomed at the community meeting on this coming Wednesday at Art Space at 6:00 PM. Please all come. This is a community space, we need community input. And I think that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the pieces of input, Mayor, that Councilwoman Duff, that we got in April is that people wanted a really nice ground plane. The first 20 feet of a building are what people really experience as pedestrians. And I think our architects have really listened to that and achieved that in this, even though, again, we have these big boxes we got to fit into here. They've found a way to create that transparency, the shade, the really nice walkability in that building. And I think, I think you're right. I think it will engage people in that way.
I just want to say amen to Jen's comments. I like the design of the building, and particularly, as you were mentioning, Rick, up close and personal, I think this is really going to wow people and have a dramatic impact on the neighborhood and on the area and on downtown. It's going to be transformative. I was talking yesterday to downtown development people who keep saying, everybody's waiting, you know, tell us when ASU is actually here, and then we'll come in and sign leases. And so we're going to see a real tipping point occur when, when the reality of what you've just shown us sinks in. So I have been saying, it's great that ASU's coming, it's, I'm grateful for that, but even more for what they're bringing. The program, I've been looking forward to getting a short paragraph describing the programming for a while, and this film that you just showed us, Jake, really delivered. So I'm anxious for the, to do what we can to get that out to the community as much as possible, because that's, that's very exciting, the idea that this technology, this is the most cutting-edge technology there is, and it has such a broad application from, you know, training doctors and nurses to, you know, there's nothing that couldn't be impacted by this technologies and all the different degrees that are going to be here. This is, it's great that the film school's coming. I love that. But this is a lot more than the film school, as the degrees that you indicated, you know, all the, the multiple engineering and technology degrees that are going to come out of this building. So thank you to everyone who has worked so hard on this, city staff and ASU side of it. You've really delivered. I think those who are skeptical about the aesthetics of the building are going to be very pleased as it unfolds and as the, it's been premature to this point. And I think just the design is focused on the functionality of the building. And now that we're going to be talking, you know, more of these, this is a dramatic rendering that's, that's coming out right, you know, that you're showing us right now. So it shows how impactful this building is for really all of downtown. So anyway, I couldn't be more pleased. Thank you very much. Great hard work. Mr. Thompson?
I, I'm just glad these are renderings, because unlike the mayor, I don't see the wow factor in this. When, when I think of ASU, I think of the Cronkite School in downtown Phoenix. I think of the law school or the Thunderbird renderings. I mean, those to me are wow. And I, and granted, you're, you have to work with what you've got, and that's the unfortunate part. But I just expect so much more for our citizens. I mean, 60, we're putting $63 million into this, and ASU's putting another $10 million into this. It should be off the charts wow for $63 million or $73 million. And I just don't see this as wow. I see this as mediocrity at best. So I'm expecting a little more. And so like I said, I'm glad these are renderings, and hopefully the architect and the, and the group comes back with something that we can look at and other people can look at and other cities can look at and go, wow. That's what I want.
Right. But we also welcome your specific ideas, too.
Mr. Luna?
Thank you very much. I'm excited about the whole program. I had the opportunity to go to NYU to see their, their school and what they're doing in terms of virtual reality, augmented, augmented reality, and artificial intelligence. This is very exciting for our community, and we're very excited that you're going to be here. In terms of the aesthetics, I like that you've incorporated some elements of what you have at the law school. I imagine your screen's going to be similar to what, what's there in the courtyard area? That is your law school, right?
Yes, but this is really a different thing. This is a high-resolution screen.
Perfect.
So it's more like, if you think about the, if you've been to the ASU football stadium and seen the new screen there, it's not as big, I don't think. But it's the same, you know, it's, it's, it's a crystal-clear picture, as opposed to the law school is low-res, is all low-res for the most part, LED. What's, what's at the law school is more like what's on the left-hand side, that we're going to do things with color. So it's very different.
Okay. And one of the things in terms of programmatically, we just had the Mesa Film Festival. This would be an ideal location for Mesa community members interested in film to be able to bring the community together, to really showcase the school and to display some of their fantastic work. So I'm looking forward to it. I know that the lighting design, when you light the building, it's going to change the configuration, how it's going to look to the public, so I'm looking forward to that. And best of luck, because I'm excited for this project.
I will say, just to speak to some of the concerns about the design, I very much like the design, but during the day, and this type of daytime rendering is one look, but at night, this is going to be far more of a signature building than any of the downtown Phoenix buildings. It will be alive. And I think that is, that's going to be a very noteworthy addition to the nightlife and the downtown city center.
And to that point, I lived in Vegas, so hopefully people in Vegas don't get upset with me and bombard me. But I've always said, you know, Vegas is like the ugliest city in the world during the day, but at night, it's the most beautiful city in the world because it's lit up. But I just want something that we can say is beautiful day and night.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff, Rick, and Jake for your presentation. Thank you for putting solar on the roof. I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm sure we're going to get an RFP for Frank and put, integrate the renewable energy. That's one thing I've been pushing ever since I've been on council, is renewable energy. And, you know, we have a lot of sunshine in our, in our city and in our state. I, I really am curious about combining the elephants or, elephants, elements of our current design features in our community, like our, our IT building currently, that used to be our old library. If, if, if that's going to be disregarded, I understand that. But those are architectural features that have historical significance to some people. I think that's important for us as a city and council, that we're bringing ASU downtown as an investment by building this building, and that maturing our partnerships with this educational feature is going to be perpetual. I mean, it's going to be lifetime. ASU is huge. All my children went to ASU and graduated from there. But incorporating our, our relationships with ASU is important to me. And I know you have many design elements that you need to integrate into this building, and you're listening to some concerns, and there's, there's a lot of valid And there's, there's a lot of valid concerns and I hope that you take those all into account. And, and I share some of Mr. Thompson's concerns too about the architecture of the building. But at the end of the day, I know you'll do a great job. The, again, just press forward. I'm excited about this and bringing this down to our community and it'll be a focal point and it'll allow us to jumpstart our city downtown area. And it'll be, again, a global destination, I think, for a lot of students coming to little old Mesa, Arizona. So thank you.
Vice Mayor, you'll be, you'll be pleased to know that among the elements of the building are several elephant doors that serve the production studios.
You know, I appreciate you helping me out here, Jeff. I'm almost ready to go eat Councilmember Luna's burrito over here.
Frankie.
Jake, you mentioned, you know, Vice Mayor mentioned some partnerships. I think, you know, I have some, some concerns with aesthetics, but as far as the building, you know, I think at the end of the day will be, I think, a really impressive feat here in downtown. But as far as the partnerships, that's where I think I go to as far as having, you know, film school, VR studios, you know, students that will learn, you know, the future technologies of the society, right? How can we leverage, what have you seen in other parts of the country, world, how this type of embeddedness of work happening here that we can lure then potential other industry to our downtown or our surrounding community to leverage jobs and build a workforce then to apply for those jobs for our residents to have that future, also to, you know, interact with this opportunity. So can you elaborate a little bit more on what you were saying on that?
Yeah, absolutely. I will say one thing that I think is going to make this building unique is that the central part of that mission that we, that I mentioned during the presentation about fusing together industry, community, research and curriculum, because that, we haven't found a place anywhere in the world that does all of those together. Usually it's industry and university, like kind of the ivory tower scenario. The things we have looked at, we've looked at universities around the world that are doing this type of research. We've looked at professional industry partners that are developing research and we're talking to them. We're putting together an industry advisory board that will be composed of representatives from all the different sectors with a, with a preference for corporations or organizations that have representation in Mesa, including Intel, Boeing, all the, the, those that have facilities here already. And then we're also working directly with small companies that are in the Mesa, Scottsdale and Phoenix areas. Mesa with a particularly like Ball Two Studios is, is already producing great VR, AR work out of, out of downtown Mesa already. So we are, we are looking to help work with, nurture startups and help the native grown businesses sort of elevate to the next level by giving them access to resources they couldn't afford on their own, just from an infrastructure perspective, as well as, of course, obviously spinning off student-based venture, ventures, building larger partnerships that go beyond the, and bringing new partnerships into the Mesa area.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Well, thanks again. We appreciate this and we're not announcing the date of a groundbreaking yet, are we? Are we, is that?
It should come shortly.
Okay. So we'll look forward to that. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Great work. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item two B. That's to hear a presentation and provide direction on proposed adjustments to solid waste, gas and electric rates. Mr. Boucher and McGray, thank you. Looks like we're going with Scott. Take one of those bubbly waters.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Scott Boucher, the Director of Environmental Management and Sustainability. Here today to talk to you about a couple of proposed rate changes for this year. First, I want to start off with a couple of updates. First, of our award-winning Household Hazardous Materials Facility, we just finished our first year of operation of that facility two weeks ago. We served almost 12,000 customers in that first year at that facility and had over 575,000 pounds of material that was delivered to the facility from our residents. The great part is half of that material was either diverted to our swap shop or sold to local vendors. Some of the materials that we sell are items such as used oil and batteries. And as a matter of fact, the swap shop is so popular, if you have been to the facility, we're making some slight changes in the front to add additional parking for the swap shop because we've run out of parking spaces because so many folks are coming there. So we're fine as far as our queuing areas for residents to be able to drop off material, but for them to be able to go into the swap shop and see what materials are available for them, we need additional parking. So we've been working on adding a couple of additional parking spots for our residents. In addition to that, our neighborhood cleanup program, we rebranded that last year from the Clean Sweep, Green Sweep program and it's been very successful. This is the program where you, residents can get together with their neighbors and order roll-offs that will be delivered into their neighborhood that they can use either for cleaning up their yards or bulk materials that they wouldn't be able to fit into their black barrel. And this has been a very popular program. We, last year utilized approximately 93% of the halls that we had available in this program and this year. So we'll book out these, these events for folks to do them. And through February of 2020, we're at a 99% utilization. So we're booked pretty much all the way through February. Right now, we're taking reservations for the program past February. In addition to that, we work a lot with our partners here in the city code compliance, neighborhood outreach and the police department on special events that they may have or special needs that they have. Now I'll jump into some of the rate changes. So if you recall, I was, I was back here about a month ago and we had a pretty long discussion about recycling. One of the things also affected with the recycling is our commercial program. So at that time, I told you, if you're a City of Mesa customer, you have a recycling option available to you if you're a customer of our solid waste department. And that includes our commercial customers. And so because of the changes that we have seen in the recycling market, we are proposing some rate increases both to our cardboard, our front load cardboard program and our front load co-mingled program. So you'll see at the bottom on those proposed, we, we used to have a flat rate. It didn't really matter which size bin you were using. There was a flat rate associated with it. And then next to that, if you had multiple bins, we give you a discount on those bins. So what we are proposing is to increase the, the price of those, both cardboard and co-mingle will match up with each other. And the larger the, the bin that you have, the, the higher that price will be. And in addition to that, we're proposing a slight increase on the multi-bin factor associated with the recycling program. We also, so we don't have any proposed residential rate increases this year, but we do have some proposed increases on our commercial program. The front load rates, there is a overall 3.8% increase and there's a, the, the front load program has a pretty complex rate schedule associated with it. That is a, there's several factors that go into that. It's increasing the base rates of our six and our eight yard bins, increasing the multi-bin factor that I just discussed with the recycling program will have that increasing. And then also increasing our multi-day factor. You get a discount as a commercial customer if you have our service more than one day a week. And increasing also our out of zone fees. So we have certain zones that we go into during the week. And if you need service outside of your zone on those days that we provide service in those zones, we charge an extra charge for that. And so we're, we're recommending an increase on that. Our commercial roll-off rates, we're also recommending it's about a 2% increase that would happen there. And that's again, a combination of different factors of the hall fees associated with it and an increase in the tipping fees. And then our green waste. Historically, the green waste tipping fee was, was lower than what we paid for solid waste, but that has changed over the years. And so over the last several years, we've been increasing that green waste tipping fee to get it to what we're paying when we bring that to our partners who process that green waste. I will say that the green waste is a very small proportion of the business that we do. It is typically, you know, Mesa Public Schools will use them from time to time. And then one of our bigger customers is the golf courses when they do overseeding, that they'll use those, those green waste bins. But it really is a small portion of our business that we do on a day-to-day, on a day-to-day basis. In addition to that, we're, we're recommending an increase in our barrel pullback fee. So city code does require you to pull your barrel back from the street after your service day. We do get complaints from residents about neighbors or neighborhoods that don't pull back that barrel. Currently, we have a $2.21 fee associated with that. That really doesn't recover the cost associated with us going out there and inspecting twice a week whether or not that barrel has been pulled back. So we're proposing to increase that to $10. I will say this isn't something that we proactively go out and look for barrels that have been pulled back and try to find people. This is only dealt with on a complaint basis, when we have neighbors that are calling in and saying that our neighbors aren't doing this. And we try and work with them in the beginning to make them aware of the code that they have to pull it back. But if we're not able to get them to do that, we're asking for an increase in that. That's all that I have today. So with that, I can take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Scott. Questions for Mr. Boucher. Yes, Jeremy.
Morning, Scott. How are you?
Good morning.
I have a couple of questions here. After these rate adjustments, do you see your net income being positive or negative for this upcoming fiscal year?
For the upcoming fiscal year, we see that it should be in the positive with the commercial increases and the increases in recycling. The biggest, the biggest factor going right now on the commercial side is the recycling part. The one big question mark with the commercial is with these increases on the recycling. It is a significant increase. We don't know how many customers may choose to cancel the service. That is the big question mark that we have with the commercial side is how many folks, because you do, it's an open market, you have your choice of who you may have as your service provider. And so through this, we're, we're still trying to stay competitive in the market. And I will say even our competitors have increased significantly their cost for recycling. So this is our, our, our best, our best guess at trying to keep the customers, but at the same time, keeping that net income positive.
Okay. And what, I mean roughly, what do you think your net income will be based on these adjusted rates?
I would have to go back and look through with, with budget. We've been working with budget. We are through. So it's, it's interesting with solid waste because a lot of the, the bills that we get are in arrears. And so three months into the, to the year right now, we are, I can tell you, we are ahead of schedule as far as our revenues. Our revenues are outpacing what we were budgeted for and our expenses are below. So overall, I think we're, we're doing well.
So Mayor and Council, attached to this afternoon for the Monday council session for the notice of intent to adjust utility rates will be a cash flow statement that will be included for all of the utilities. The one that'll be included for solid waste, those show them about evens, about $150,000 in the negative. To us, that's basically on the utility, that's, that's breaking even.
Okay. And on the residential side, I know that, first I want to say I appreciate you shifting the cost burden to the commercial side from the residential. I think that's important that we start seeing some of that burden be shifted. The question I have is on the comparative, like Valley Cities, our solid waste is currently the most expensive. How do you see us not adjusting rates? Do you see that we will still be the most expensive from a solid waste perspective or will we fall based on other cities increasing their solid waste? What does that comparative analysis look like?
I can just tell you, so I was at a conference last week, WasteCon was here in Phoenix. And so speaking with a lot of my colleagues, most of the cities are looking at rate increases that are being driven by recycling. They're going through a process similar to what we go through, so I can't tell you what their rate increases are going to be. But I would not be surprised if we are no longer the most expensive by this time next year.
Okay, that's awesome. And the last question is the, and I guess this will be in the cash flow statement for the enterprise fund, but when are we projecting that our enterprise fund will hit our minimum balance reserve? I know that it was fiscal year '23, '24 last year, right? That we dropped down to our minimum reserve balance 10%?
In the cash flow statement, that'll be going out this afternoon or early this evening. We're showing, again, we're taking into consideration what's being discussed this morning. So we still have Frank Syria to go over. But based on those, we'll be updating that. And at that point, that we become, with no additional rate changes beyond what was discussed in this last month, that would be fiscal year '22, '23 that we would drop below our target fund balance.
Okay. So we're, the target fund balance reserve is shifting closer to the present time, right? At the 10%. What is the plan once we hit the minimum reserve balance? Then will we just start increasing rates at a higher velocity? Like what is the plan once we hit that minimum reserve?
So Mayor and Council, every, every year we'll be coming back to you with the financial status of the enterprise fund. And this is a few years out. And so every year we'll be considering whether we need to do rate adjustments in that particular year. In the past, we have, the council has chosen to do small incremental rating adjustments each year so that we don't have a year that has a large rate adjustment. If we do not do small adjustments during the, you know, in those years and we just wait until we get to that year, then at that point, we'd have to look at our financial situation to see what we would need for rate revenues.
But the rate adjustment is the only variable that you're able to adjust in order to?
No.
No. Mayor and Council, this, there are many factors that go into the enterprise forecast. And so we are forecasting what we estimate to be expenses over those years as well. As we see, sometimes they go up. That's happened with recycling. Gone up more than we forecasted. Sometimes the expenses are less than we forecast. Each year we look at our debt service and our outstanding debt. And we have been fortunate in the last few years to have the ability to refinance some of the debt that has been callable to a lower interest rate and that has saved the enterprise fund significantly, millions of dollars over the last few years, having those opportunities. We will continue to look for those opportunities each year. However, we don't anticipate or forecast those. We don't want to rely on those. So in the forecast right now, we do not anticipate any refinancing of existing debt. We also include any capital improvement program in here. So we have the capital improvement program that was discussed with council at the beginning of the month. That is in the forecast as well. If anything were to deviate from that, that would change the forecast. So we're constantly updating those all. It's not just the revenue side, but it's the expense side. It's our debt service, it's our projects, it's how we, opportunities to refinance our debt. There's many things that go into this forecast, which why it's, it's an ongoing living document that we continuously update and update the council on the financial status.
Thank you, Candace. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. Frankie.
On the slide of commercial recycling rate increases, was the current rate you have at the bottom, two yard, three yard, four yard, was the current rate just a base rate for, for all those?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So you're, you're asking for an increase for all those additional yards, bins?
Right. And that's because with recycling now, previously when it, it would generate revenue, when you were able to sell cardboard for $100 plus a ton, it didn't really matter to us what size bin you had. As a matter of fact, the larger the bin and the more material that you had, the more, the better it was. But now with that flipping, we're, we're kind of following more of the trash model where the larger the bin that you have, the higher the cost is associated with that.
Is that due, due to contamination or?
That's just.
Or is that just because of the amount of material or?
Yeah. It's just, it's not contamination. Typically, our cardboard is, you know, with our commercial customers, this cardboard is relatively clean. The one issue we run into is maybe some packaging material that's inside the cardboard. But this is typically a really clean stream that we have. But it just simply is when we're bringing that to the recycling facilities now, we're having to pay per ton.
The market. The market is not paying you the same.
Right. The market is not paying us nearly the same as what it used to. And therefore, the more material you have, the more expensive it is for the city. So we need to give that back to the customer as far as that expense.
And then on the, I didn't know we charged a barrel pullback fee. What's the increase from 221 to 10 relate to? And it's, you mentioned it's just a complaint base.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Is it, how many complaints do we receive? And we're then needing to pull back the barrel?
It, there are not a lot. I can look, so currently, we have 83 open cases for barrel pullback complaints that we have received, and that's citywide. And this is just, again, we try and educate the resident that they need to get that off. That's our first priority. We would just prefer everybody pulling back. We don't want to drive out and inspect if your barrel's still there the next day. But we deal with it on a complaint basis. And this is really just to try and recover our cost, as we have inspectors that are driving around the city, trying to see whether or not that barrel has pulled back. So this is really just to try and recoup the costs associated with us going back out there. And I think we, we have had some customers who pretty much say, for $2, then you can, you can pull it back for me, and we'll pull it back off of the street. We're hoping that at $10, that takes away that to where somebody will actually begin to pull their barrel back.
It, as far as the process, do you do something like code compliance or like a warning? Because I know they have pretty much like 85, 90%, you know, then the resident does, you know, whatever code issues they have.
Yes.
Do you start with that piece?
Yes. We give them at least one warning and education of what the requirements are for them to pull that barrel back before we would ever implement a fine with them. So we, we definitely try and work with the residents. Again, our preference is not to try and have more of these fines. Our preference is that they just pull the barrel back at the end of the day.
You don't want to be in the garbage barrel valet service.
Yes.
I'd pay them $10 to take it out and pull it back.
I can't get my teenage son to do either one, so I might have to call you guys.
I'd also suggest on that pullback, as a good neighbor, I know sometimes I am guilty for leaving it out, like, the next morning, like, gosh, I didn't put it back last night. Is, if possible, pull back your neighbor's barrel to their gate or, for the time it takes to call the city and the city, whatever, if possible, pull it back to their gate or to the fence. I think it's a gentle reminder or helpful. Maybe they forgot, maybe something came up, just do that for your neighbor and be neighborly. A comment on the cost of trash is, previously, we used to make money on recycling. So it was all good, and we promoted everybody to recycle. And, and actually, that was a benefit to the cost of our trash, is we were able to sell recycling. Well, that completely has changed in the market. And so now, it costs us a great deal to recycle, as well as have our trash. So my suggestion to our residents and somewhat to the city is to really focus on reduction and reuse of materials. We need to do it for our city, we need to do it for our earth. And if we can incorporate maybe a campaign within our solid waste about looking at that and making decisions as consumers. Can I make purchase decisions? Can I reduce my waste at my home? And as businesses, what can we do about doing that? So I think we really need to focus on that. And yes, our recycling program has changed, and we need to bring attention to that to reduce the contamination. But I would love to see a campaign, a contest. I know I see on my social media, a lot of people sharing different ways in which they have found to reduce trash that maybe we haven't thought about, and buying bulk on the cereal, and so, whatever. It goes on and on. There's a lot of ideas, and like, yeah, I could do that, and it's easy. So I just want to put a word out for that. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Amen to what Jen said. I, I know we're, we're coming back in a few months with the, the status of recycling on the residential side. But just the discussion that we've had in the last month or two has caused me to be more sensitive to what I put in my recycled barrel and be more conscious, conscientious about making sure the wrong things aren't in there. So I think that's evolving. We're all going to need to take, you know, take it up a notch in terms of how we recycle. And with regard to the presentation, I think it's, it's important to remind ourselves that, that we are in a competitive market when it comes to the commercial. And so if these rates are too high, we will lose customers. And as opposed to residential, our, our goal is to keep rates as low as possible for the benefit of our, of our residents. But in the commercial area, we are just in the marketplace. So it sounds like you're, you're still pricing things very competitively, and, but time will tell, I guess, right?
Yeah. We, we have continued to maintain and even slightly grow our commercial program over the years, but we are very sensitive to the fact that, you know, the, the rates are, are a huge factor to that. In addition to that, I think it's the customer service that we provide. That's what we hear a lot from our customers, is that the level of customer service that the City of Mesa Solid Waste Division provides is just a higher level than what they receive from some of the other contractors. And they, they appreciate that and they understand, you know, trash is one of those things that you don't really want to worry about. You want to be able to put it out, and you know that it's being picked up when it's supposed to be picked up, and that there's no issues associated with it, there's no issues with the billing. And so that's what we strive to do, is, is in addition to keeping those rates as low as we possibly can, we strive to provide the best customer service we most possi, we possibly can, so.
We got a question on that, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Do we have like a monopoly over the resident, residential trash service? Or can a third-party company come in and compete against us?
No. We, we are the exclusive solid waste provider for residential in the City of Mesa.
And so is that like an ordinance or something that gives us that ability? And are we able to use that same ordinance to become the only commercial provider of solid waste?
So by state law, we have to make the commercial open.
But not residential? There's like some, well, interesting. Okay. Thanks.
On that point, I had a great conversation earlier this week with the Vice Mayor of Apache Junction. They're in the midst of a, some big controversy there, because they have private residential haulers. And we should not envy Apache Junction. All right. Thank you very much. Next, are we hearing from Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor and Council, we are on Monday. You'll notice that we're not asking you to approve rates, but we're, what we want to make sure is you understand what goes into the notice that we have to put out publicly for 60 days? Let's see, is that the right number of days? And then council will not, we're not asking council to take action on the actual approval of the rates, just the notification of rate changes. Then we'll come back. What's the date? Do we have a specific date now?
January 17th, for the introduction.
Introduction of the specific rates. We're just trying to give you a sense.
Right.
But we can still have further discussion, but we need to at least present to you what we're going to notify of possible changes going forward. So this is the last of the rates that will be included in the notification that you will approve on Monday.
Well, that we'll notice on Monday.
Notice on-
60 days later.
Just said what I did want to say.
Yeah.
Notice, sorry.
Got it.
Real quick on that. Chris, what's, remind me again, well, how do you notice? Do you put it into?
I'm going to let Candace speak specifically what the statute requires.
Yep.
Council and, uh, Mayor and Councilmember already, there are very, the state statute is very specific on how we adjust utility rates. And so we do have to do, the council adopts a formal notice of intent to adjust utility rates. We do have to have 60 days between the adoption of that notice and before the council can take any kind of action on those adjustment rates. We have to post it on our website, so it's actually on the homepage. It'll say notice of intent to adjust or say utility rate adjustments. You can click on that, and they can get all of the backup and the detail about it. It does require that we post a cash flow statement, that's the one I, I mentioned earlier. So it's not just, it'll be the long rates of, as Scott kind of alluded to, when we look at like commercial solid waste, it's not just like one rate, there are many different rate. So it's the whole rate book that shows all of the changes that are being recommended by staff. It has a cash flow statement that's attached to it, as well as a council report. It's posted, again, posted for 60 days. Then we'll come back in January, where we'll introduce the ordinance in the first meeting in January, and then look for council direction or, or action on that second, and then hold the public hearing, that's the official public hearing, for the rates in the second meeting in January.
And the effective date?
The effective date right now is March 1st, is what we're looking at for an effective date. We would actually write it into the ordinance, that the rates would be effective on March 1st of 2020.
So most of these rates will affect commercials, so it gives them-
Time to give them advanced notice if it's going to, so they can prepare for that, so.
Great. Thank you. Frank?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Frank McCray with the Energy Resources Department. To my right and your left is John Petros, our Senior Fiscal Analyst. He'll be helping me with the presentation. And also want to mention Tony Kudorn is in the audience, in case we get into a deep dive on our energy supply cost and those types of matters. Thank you again for the opportunity to appear this morning to talk about our proposals for the electric and gas rate adjustments. Just want to remind the council that the criteria that we really drive our decisions with is finding ways to maintain, enhance the safety and reliability and economics of our system. We've also incorporated the criteria of environmental stewardship as well. So I want to mention that when Jeff mentioned doing solar with the City Center Plaza project, we're also working very closely with Scott Boucher and his team on those RFPs for solar resources. In terms of the economics of our system, I don't think there's really a better way to analyze and, and see what the efficiency of what we do is any more clear than how we adjust our rates and where our rates and bill levels are at. So a little bit about the rate adjustment principles is shown on Slide 2. We're a very capital-intensive entity, so we've got about 90% of our costs are fixed in the short term. However, our revenues, our fixed revenue is only about 24% of our total revenues. On the electric side and on the gas side, it's about 42%. So we're trying to recover fixed costs through things that are based upon and dependent upon the consumption of our customers. We've developed a couple of support programs on the electric side. One is the Summer Energy Assistance Program, which will be covered in a subsequent presentation. But today, I wanted to mention that we have two economic development-related programs. One is shown there on Slide 3. It's the E3.6D rate program. It's for small business attraction in the downtown area. We've got eight customers participating in that program. The other program is one that's had a much longer life. It's E3.6. It's for the larger type of customers, where they're making substantive capital investments, consuming large amounts of electricity, and they get a rate discount. We've got two customers on that rate program. For the electric rate structure, that's shown on, summarized on Slide 5. Slide 6 and 9 are going to illustrate how our reductions in energy supply costs have been passed through to our customers. So we have mechanisms called the Electric Energy Cost Adjustment Factor on the electric side, and the Purchased Natural Gas Cost Adjustment Factor on the gas side. Those are direct pass-throughs. Those rates are changed as frequently as Monday, and we'll see some slides where we can show how those reductions over the last several years have impacted our customers' rates. We haven't had any rate increase in the non-residential customer classes since 2004. So we've been able to pass through our energy supply costs. Those have been going down, so those customers' bills have seen reductions for a significant period of time. But now we're finding ourselves at a point where we're very competitive with SRP. We think it's the appropriate time to start adjusting those commercial rates, which I'll talk about in a few slides. Slide 6 again is an indication of what's happened with our electric energy supply cost. In that period of time, since fiscal year 2009, 10, we've seen about a 31% reduction in our energy supply costs. And so those costs get passed through to our customers. The good things about that mechanism is it's an immediate-type effect on our revenues and our customers' bills, and it's allowed us to offset the needed rate increases we've had in those rate components that are not the cost adjustment factors. The proposed electric rate adjustments, they're consistent with the principles that I indicated on Slide 2. And other than the ECAF adjustment, most of the customers will be seeing decreases. The residential will see no increases. They didn't see any increases in rates, non-ECAF adjustments, for the 10 years prior to 2014. So we just started increasing residential rates in small amounts, starting in 2014. Slide 8 shows what we're proposing on the residential side. Again, we're increasing that system service charge by proposing to increase it by 25%, 25 cents per month. And, and what's shown here is a cumulative impact of 4.6%, 0.3% with the system service charge, and then a 4.3% increase in the ECAF. That ECAF figure is based upon a, I'll call it a stale forecast. Our actual costs that we've seen in fiscal year 1920 have been much lower than what we were in the forecast, and our forecasted costs for the remainder of fiscal year 1920 are much lower. So it's really going to be more like a 2.2% decrease in fiscal year 1920, if you account for the more updated ECAF projection and the actual costs that we've seen so far this year.
Can I ask you a question on that, Frank? So you just showed us a graph before this that showed that over years, the cost of electricity, the wholesale cost of electricity has gone down, I believe. But you're projecting an increase, I think, in our cost of electricity, which is 4.3% of the 4.6% rate increase, correct?
Right. That, that's the stale forecast that I mentioned. So if we, if we look at our actual cost for the most recent 12 months, you'll see a decrease from that number. And if you look at what we're forecasting for the actual cost of fiscal year 1920 and the remainder of fiscal year 1920, you're going to see a decrease. So those ECAF costs, those pass-through costs are being decreased. That'll offset the 25 cents per month that's proposed, to the point where it'll be a 2.2% decrease for our residential customers, on average.
So, yeah, so the 4% is a very conservative number. But I, I want to warn everyone, I mean, if you can see since, what, the 14, 15, we've been seeing cheap electric power come, which is good. I guess the hesitation is how longer, you know, we've had one, two, three, four, five years of decreasing costs. I don't know if that's sustainable. I don't know if the other energy sources coming into the portfolio help offset that. But I think we have to just be careful, we don't create the expectation that every year, everybody's electric bill's going to keep decreasing. At some point, just because of the actual energy cost, which we don't control, other than we have to go negotiate the contracts, but we just pass along the actual commodity costs directly to our customers. We don't absorb that, we just pass along. So it's been good, the last five years, that's been decreasing. I just want to be careful. I don't know, unless Frank can tell us, if that's going to continue for another five years. But I think we just want to be careful, and I think that's why we're being a little conservative and saying, it could increase. But again, it's coming off an increase of the lowest, oops, I lost my screen, lower than it's been in the last 10 years. So I just want, we, we want to be cautious about managing expectations about where the, the cost of commodities are.
What, what I can assure you is the efforts that we've undertaken in the past several years are going to continue. We've aggressively pursued the opportunities in the wholesale competitive markets. As we've been given direction and as we're pursuing plans to diversify an already 20% renewable portfolio and our energy supplies to go for more renewables for solar, wind, et cetera, there is a potential risk that if we choose to go in that direction, our costs may rise. But our renewable portfolio will increase accordingly. But there is dynamics in the market. There's a lot of existing plants that are very low-cost and efficient, that are retiring because of their age and because of their market potential in the future, the amount of capital investment they're going to have to make to keep those plants continuing to operate. Those plants are getting retired, so the excess capacity or excess energy in the market is declining over time. So how we manage that is going to be, we're probably going to enter, be entering into longer-term contracts. The last several contracts we've been entering, entering into have been one-year contracts, because that's how we've been able to, to keep our costs low. If we were to enter into a three-year, four-year contract a couple of years ago, our costs would have been higher the last couple of years. So the, the market's changing pretty dramatically. My crystal ball is, is fuzzy, but I can, the one thing that's clear is how hard we're going to work to keep those costs down.
I, I get it. And, and I, I know there's a lot of forecasting going into this, and I'm just trying to better understand it. So of this 4.6% cumulative increase that we're anticipating, 4.3 is due to this forecasted increase. I'm sorry, what is EC, EECAF?
That's the Energy Cost Adjustment Factor. That's the pass-through mechanism, so that when costs go down on our energy supply costs, they're immediately passed through to customers.
So that's-
Conversely, if they go up, they can also be passed through to customers.
That's our commodity cost for buying wholesale electricity.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So i- if the rates continue, if that-
In the last five years, it's been a dramatic decrease.
Okay. So the only thing that we are proposing to increase is this 25 cent per month service charge, and the rest is really just a projection based on our anticipation of how the wholesale electric market's going to go.
And we're all doing this in the context of being competitive with SRP.
Okay, so that's the other part of this.
And so that's the underlying, is that we, much like we discussed earlier, we need to be competitive with the other market. This would still put us at or below SRP?
Yes, sir. Yeah, significantly below.
For residential customers?
And again, that 4.3% increase on that Energy Cost Adjustment Factor component, that was what I'll call a stale forecast. That was made quite some time ago. The actual costs that we've been incurred for the first three months of this fiscal year and what we're projecting now, where the market's at for the next nine, eight, nine months, is much lower than that 4.3%. So that's why we're confident that we can say with those decreases in cost, instead of it being a 4.6% increase in our average customers' bills, it's going to be more like a 2.2% decrease, even with the 25 cents per month increase.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Mr. Thompson?
And I think it's important for everyone to remember, and Frank pointed this out, as did Chris, that, you know, that the commodity itself is a pass-through cost. The customer, our customers, our citizens aren't paying for that. We're not up marking or what have you, or discounting the commodity charge. That's, it is what it is. What our focus is, is on the, what we used to call the meter charge, which encapsulates really your O&amp;M and your ongoing cost of the meters and the maintenance of the system and so forth. And is that fair to say that's what the system service charge is? It's encapsulating the O&amp;M cost, the cost of material that's going up, the cost of the meters that are going up, and so forth?
So if you look at Slide 8, that shows the three primary components to our electric rates. That system service charge is designed to recover the cost of metering, billing, customer service, payment processing, et cetera. The usage charge is typically what recovers our non-metering operation and maintenance cost, our lineman on the electric side, our crew leaders on the gas side, all of the support services that we get from other departments. So that's where we recover those costs. The debt service on our capital investments is recovered through the usage charge. Then that electric energy supply cost, or the ECAF, is what's designed to recover our wholesale power supply cost, including transmission on the electric side and interstate transportation cost on the gas side. Okay, Slide 10 is, oh, I'm sorry, Slide 9. That's just showing on, for the average residential customer, how their bills have changed over the last several years. And again, that $90 value was based upon a stale forecast. That updated number, if you will, is more like $88.38, so it's a very small increase over the prior year. And then this is our comparison with Salt River Project as our benchmark, and you can see there's a difference. We're still lower than SRP in those four categories of customers. We're about 13% on the average in large customers, and we're about 22.5% on the smaller consumption customers. So again, this is the first time we've been proposing any kind of commercial rate adjustments, other than those ECAF adjustments, for quite some time. Their bills have decreased by a little over 21% over the last eight years. When we first started this strategy, we were materially above SRP on the commercial side. So we decided to focus our efforts on reducing our supply costs, passing through those costs to our customers, and then also kind of putting a freeze, a self-imposed freeze on the commercial rate increases. And so you can see the results of those efforts in that graph.
Yes, Jeremy?
So on the commercial side, we've seen a decrease over the last 10 years of 21%, but on the residential, it's only been 10%. Why are we, and I apologize if you already answered this question, but why are we decreasing the commercial cost at a rate of double of the residential side?
We use the benchmark with SRP as one of those guiding principles that I mentioned in the prior slide. So our residential rates became lower than SRP probably 10-plus years ago. And so we felt comfortable that with the needed revenue that we need, that it's better to raise that from residential customers than the commercial customers. Conversely, to the residential customers being below SRP, our commercial customers have had rates and bills higher than SRP. So that's why we kind of imposed that freeze on commercial customers.
I got it. Thank you.
Slide 12 is that indication of the comparison, and you can still, you can see that for the large customers, there's still a material difference, a competitive disadvantage for our commercial customers compared to SRP. Our commercial bill at that level of consumption is about 7.5% higher than SRP. That average customer is about 4% higher than SRP. For the low-consumption customer, the advantage is, for being a Mesa customer, is a little over 23%.
Thank you. Frank?
Frank, I have a question. How many large customers do you have in that category?
About 600 at that consumption level. We call it the fourth quartile, so there's about 600 of our 2,500 customers are in that large category.
Is that a certain kilowatt threshold that they could consume, or not to belabor it?
The average of the large customer class is about 13,000 kilowatt-hours per month.
Okay, thanks.
The voluntary green tariff is a program that we're starting. It's, we're kind of using the SRP program as a template. So this would allow customers to add additional renewable supplies to our already-existing 20% renewable green hydro portfolio. So an example for our average residential customer who's using about 840 kilowatt-hours a month, if they chose to get an additional 25% of their energy met by renewables, it would increase their bill by about $2.07 a month. So if they went to 100%, it would be about $8.28 per month. We also think this might be a really good program for those customers who have already installed solar, but because of the size of the installation, they weren't able to meet exactly 100% of their energy consumption. They could sign up on this program to those levels and be able to meet 100% of their energy requirements with renewables.
I have a question on this one. This is a new program, and it would start in January of 20, March of 2020. Okay.
That's the plan, sir. So I'd like to remind people that when it comes to residential solar, we've got a little bit of a challenge here. Our demographics, we're kind of on the lower end of the income scale, and we also have a lot of multifamily, non-owner occupied rentals. And so that really makes it a difficult investment decision for those types of homeowners, as well as the people occupying those homes. So this is a really viable option for them to elect to meet some of their energy requirements with renewable energy. So I'd like to turn to the natural gas rate proposal. So it's got a very similar structure compared to the electric side with that system service charge. We have a usage charge that's based upon their monthly consumption. Then we have that pass-through mechanism for our wholesale gas supplies and transportation costs. And so Slide 16 shows what's happened with our purchased natural gas cost and those transportation costs over several years. It's been about a 44% decrease since fiscal year 09-10 up to 1920.
Excuse me, Frank. Mr. Freeman has a question.
Sorry, before you move off the green tariff slide, you know, as you've attended conferences, we know that renewables are coming down in their costs and application to consumers. Do you, what percent of your portfolio today is with renewable energy that we can accurately say? And do you include hydro power in that?
I do include hydro in the definition of renewables. It's a carbon-free resource. So I include it in our calculation of what percentage of our energy supplies are renewable. With our customer-owned solar program, we're up to about 1% of our annual energy requirements. We've got a pretty good-sized wave of applications for interconnections and incentives for our residential solar program. So we're confident we'll be about 1% of our annual energy requirements, which again, given our demographics, I think is a pretty good accomplishment with our program. So we'll be up to about 21% total.
21% overall?
Yes, sir. If we pursue the contracts that are presented into the council on Monday, and those contracts actually come to fruition, we'd be at about almost 35% by 2023.
Are those PPAs that you're entering to and kind of laddering or structuring that purchase?
Yes, sir. Those are PPAs that we're using to replace, if you will, contracts with conventional sources that are expiring at about the same time the new solar contracts would start.
This industry is really dynamic. It's moving, I think, quite more affordable to communities than where it was like two years ago. So I appreciate your efforts in that and keeping that renewables apart, and as we can increase it, I'm all for that too in our portfolio.
Appreciate that direction. We're definitely pursuing.
I got a question on the solar as well. What, how much, how long are those term contracts that you're signing for those alternative energy sources?
I believe they're 20 years, Tony? 20 and 25-year contracts.
That will be on Monday's agenda for approval?
It authorizes the city manager to ultimately execute those contracts. We have some substantive negotiations left to perform in order to make sure we get the deal that we're looking for.
And how much more expensive is that wholesale energy versus traditional sources?
I'm going to let Tony Kudorn, he's the one that's involved in the deep weeds on the contract negotiations.
Frank, well, he comes up, but that's a minor, I mean, you're only doing like 15 megawatts or something, I mean, that purchase?
It is, but it could increase our portfolio up to about another 15%. So it's a substantive amount of money and energy associated with those contracts.
Yeah, so just to add on what Frank stated. So we're bringing anywhere between 5 to 15 megawatts to you guys on Monday. And that particular contract, that single contract would be about 6% to 7% of our annual energy requirements. And then with our Integrated Resource Plan, which we're also bringing to you on Monday, that proposes a second purchase, maybe a couple of years out from now, maybe as a joint action with maybe an SRP or similar utility of similar size. So that's where we're getting that 20% hydro plus 6%, 6 to 7 for this one, and then another one at 6% to 7%. And then a little bit of local solar as well as city buildings. So all those projects combined to about 35%.
So how do the costs of the contract on Monday compare to our conventional resources?
Sure. So maybe five years ago, we were seeing solar prices pretty high. So our average portfolio cost right now is about $37 per megawatt hour. We were seeing solar bids up around the $60 to $90 per megawatt range. That's come down quite substantially. The most recent bid we've seen was in the mid-$20 range, depending on how much we subscribe to. So, but that could increase to the mid-$30 range if we subscribe to less. So there's still a lot of negotiations to be done and a lot of things to figure out. But suffice to say that you're very correct that solar pricing has come down substantially.
So what's the cost, if it's 37 megawatts an hour for the solar? What's our current cost per megawatt hour for regular electricity from a wholesale source?
Sure. Our average portfolio cost is about $37 per megawatt hour. The solar we're seeing is somewhere between mid-$20 and mid-$30 per megawatt hour, so lower than our average. But that average is looking at our hydropower, which is in the low 20s, and also our peak power purchases, which if we're buying on the wholesale market, can go all the way up to $100 or $200 per megawatt hour on the hottest summer days. So our portfolio is a large mix of different types of resources, and this would, you know, just be one piece of that portfolio.
So the solar electricity is cheaper than your traditional source of wholesale electricity?
It's cheaper than some sources. So it would be cheaper than some of our peak summer purchases, but it's not going to be cheaper than, say, our baseload or our hydro. Electricity pricing is very dependent upon when you buy it. So pricing in July during peak hours is going to be very expensive. Pricing during, you know, the winter or April, when not a lot of people are using their air conditioners or heaters, is going to be very cheap. In fact, sometimes it's even negative to where we're paid to take electricity. So it's very complicated, and it really depends on when you're buying the electricity.
I also need to emphasize that the prices that Tony is referencing for solar, and you'll see this in the title of the items on the agenda for Monday, is that the solar is a unit contingent type of resource, where our conventional resources are system-firm, if you will. What that means is that if there's something that impairs the ability of the solar panel to produce, like a cloud or a failed inverter or something like that, there's no financial repercussions on the part of the seller to continue to supply us power. That conventional power is called system-firm, and what that means is if there is a failure for them to deliver, then they have to go out and replace that power at their cost and provide it to us. In the event they fail to provide that power to us and we have to go out and buy the power, there's financial repercussions for them. So it's not quite an apples-to-apples comparison. It's more like an apples-to maybe a pear and orange. So keep that in mind when you, when you look at those relative price differences and you say one's cheaper than the other.
Yeah, I guess, and so these contracts are locked prices for 25 to 30 years? Or do they dynamically adjust based on electric costs in general?
They're fixed-priced.
So I guess, if I'm reading your chart correctly on the previous Slide 6, in the last nine years, your power supply cost has gone from 16.9 million to 11.6 million. That's like, what is that, like 33%? Price, wholesale prices are decreasing 33% in the last 10 years. Do you not have concerns about locking in pricing for 30 years on the solar side at a fixed, at a fixed cost?
I do, and if you were to ask me what prices would be today 15 years ago, I would say they'd easily be over $100 per megawatt hour across the board. That would be the baseload price because that's where the forecasted price of natural gas, coal, et cetera, was. But the markets have changed. Natural gas is incredibly abundant because of fracking and directional drilling. We don't import natural gas anymore. And so as a result, that's reflected in those price curves that you see there. But to think that that's going to continue, I just don't think we want to base a decision on that type of a point forecast. The one thing that I always say is that the one thing that we know about our forecast is it's going to be wrong. The issue is how wrong does it get when we rely upon that forecast before we regret making a decision on that forecast? I'm not comfortable making a decision about, of this magnitude based upon continuing that trend for the last five years. I don't believe it's going to continue, not with where we're seeing the power prices on bids. So we rejected going into a hedge price bid for this past summer because it was very high. The market was telling us, there's a lot of uncertainty in the market. There's a lot of uncertainty about the price of natural gas. They're going to head their bets, and on a firm-price basis for the summer, they increase their price. We rejected those bids, and we played the wholesale-as-available day-ahead and day-of market, and that's how we were able to reduce our costs this past year. I'm not necessarily willing to continue that strategy for the next 10 years because I see the market changing very quickly.
I understand what you're saying, Frank, and I respect your opinion. So, and it's a small enough percentage of our portfolio that you're only hedging a piece of it. It's not the entire thing anyways, so I respect what you're saying. Thanks, Frank.
And we also have to, you know, wait for contracts to expire before we start entering into new contracts. So that's one of the things that I think is helpful to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. We also don't want to lock in, you know, the next 50 megawatts right now because we think that the technology is going to continue to advance. And so maybe the price of solar power two years from now is going to be much lower than it is now. That's the reason why we want to take these 6-megawatt and 10-megawatt bytes rather than 25-megawatt bytes.
Yeah, and I'm assuming we're still seeing a significant price decrease in silicon, so the price of solar is still continuing to go down? Or is it pretty much flatlined over the last couple of years?
It seems like it's continuing to go down. Every few months or so, we see announcements that we try and follow along with for new solar deals that are signed at record-low pricing. So that doesn't seem to be stopping anytime soon.
It seems like the rate of decrease has kind of tempered a little bit in the last year or so compared to what it was for, say, 48 months ago to 12 months ago, so.
Okay, thank you.
So moving on to natural gas, I'm not going to spend too much time on Slide 15 on those components or Slide 16. I think we've talked quite a bit about that. Slide 17 is the proposed gas rate adjustments. Again, these are consistent with the principles that we've talked about on Slide 2. The proposed residential gas rates is kind of a continuation of what we've done. The proposed residential gas rates is kind of a continuation of what we've done for several years. If you look at the proposed forecast, a year or so ago, it was much higher than the 75 cents per month increase to that system service charge. So that's also going to be offset by decreases in the purchased natural gas cost adjustment factor. We just did ink an extension of a previously approved agreement by the council, which lowered our cost again for the next year. So we're going to have a cumulative decrease of about 3.2% as a result of both the changes in the pass-through mechanism and the system service charge. You can see how we compare with Southwest Gas on slide 19. That, that increase over and above Southwest Gas that you see for those low consuming customers, that's because of our rate structure. We have a little bit higher system service charge than what Southwest Gas has. Southwest Gas proposed a rate increase several years ago. The Arizona Corporation Commission decided that they didn't want to increase that system service charge. It wasn't based on economics, it wasn't based on sound pricing or rate theories, it was some kind of a political decision. So you can see how we compare with the average in larger customers. We're about 15% lower on average and almost 40% lower on the large consuming, consumption level for residential.
Thank you, Frank.
What's the proportion of the amount of customers we have on a small to large?
So the small was at the So that's reflective of the first quartile, so it's about 15,000 customers at that level.
So mostly the home, residential homes?
Very small consumption levels. The average consumption level there is like less than six thermes per month. So it's possibly a winter visitor that's using that level. Most customers are going to use more than six thermes per month. That monthly difference, just for, to put it in dollars and cents terms, is $2.34 a month for that difference between a Southwest Gas customer and a Mesa inter gas customer at that low consumption level. So it's a low bill. It looks like a large difference, but it's a low bill, so it seems large. On the commercial side, we're proposing a $2 per month increase in the system service charge with the forecasted, the updated forecast for the Ping Caff, I'm sorry, with the stale forecast for the Ping Caff, that's going to be a 7.4% cumulative reduction for the average non-residential customer. And you can see that comparison with Southwest Gas in slide 21. We're across the board better, better rates than Southwest Gas, ranging about 10% difference, 10% lower than Southwest Gas. We're making a pretty dramatic change to the CNG. We've got four customers on our CNG service. There's two customers that are quite a bit larger comparative than our other two customers. So we're going to break the, proposing to break the CNG rate class into two separate classes, a large and a small. This would be similar to also what Southwest Gas's rate structure is, they have a small and a large. The proposed increases again are going to be offset by the reductions in the Ping Caff, so the, the increase for the large CNG, it looks like a significant amount on the system service charge. That comparative rate for Southwest Gas is currently at $250 per month, so we're still quite a bit less than Southwest Gas on that system service charge. And with the changes in the Ping Caff, even with that system service charge increase, the customers are going to receive somewhere between a 3 and a 4% decrease in their bills.
I had a question on, CNG is just like commercial supply, like this isn't, has nothing to do with residential stuff, right?
It, you can be a residential customer. This is compressed natural gas, I'm sorry for using the, the CNG designation. It's compressed natural gas. So there is an ability for a residential customer to put a small compressor on their home and fuel a compressed natural gas vehicle such as a Honda Civic. They made compressed natural gas vehicles a couple of years ago. It's also for industrial facilities. UPS is converting a lot of their trucks. Our solid waste fleet is converting to compressed natural gas as well.
So we have the infrastructure in place to spin up CNG meters to like any residential client?
There's really not that much, for a residential customer, there's really not that much difference between a typical residential meter and the meter that serves a small compressor at the customer's home.
Yeah, I guess I just, it's two separate lines that you have to run from some kind of supply source though, right?
Well, you would, you would serve both meters off the single riser.
Okay.
Now, there is some state laws that dictate how the rate structure has to be, and I'm going to verify that, but I think with the proposed changes, we're still in compliance with how the state law dictates how the rate structure needs to be.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Frank, to Jeremy's, I think it helps with Jeremy's question is that the home, the residential use would be slow fill, not quick fill, and that's the difference. Because if it was a quick fill, you would obviously have to have a separate service line coming in for that quick fill service.
Yeah, and you'd, you'd have to upgrade your electric service panel to, to drive that compressor, that larger compressor too. These are, you know, a 10 gallon tank is going to take 10 hours to fill on these time fills, slow fill type compressors. So, so this slide 23 is a comparison of our current rates and the proposed rates, both with Southwest Gas's proposed rate increase that they've submitted to the ACC. And you can see there's a pretty substantial difference between our gas rates and Southwest Gas's rates for the large compressed natural gas service. We've got a little bit of different story on the, what we're doing with the small. Because of that existing rate structure, our customers, our small CNG customers pay a materially larger amount than what Southwest Gas charges. But with the proposed changes, so in this instance, we're not proposing any change to the system service charge, but we're proposing a 5 cents per therm change to the usage charge. That's going to be offset by the decreases in the pass-through so that those two customers are going to be somewhere around 3 to 4.5% reduction in their bills. You can see that reflected in slide 25, our current rates and bills compared with Southwest Gas's current rates and bills, and then our proposed compared to Southwest Gas's proposed. And that concludes what we're presenting today. We also have some additional slides attached behind that. If you have any questions on those, we'd be happy to try to respond to them.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and provide direction on the proposed streetlight master plan. RJ, welcome.
Mayor, members of the council, good morning. RJ Zeder with Transportation Department with me is Nathan Curtis, our streetlight system supervisor. I know you've heard a lot of information this morning, so we will try to move along. I know there's a meeting following this, so, but please stop us if you have a question. As you know, we've been working on the streetlight master plan for some time with the goal of being a smart city and utilizing technology. We brought a consulting team on to research lighting requirements around the country as communities have transitioned from high pressure sodium lights to LED. And then we'll get into the discussion of proposed lighting zones and the financials. Again, just some research that our team did, that we were pretty in-depth in looking around the country to see what other agencies and organizations have done. If you go back in time a little bit, you'll recall that staff proposed that council authorize a dimming study in the Desert Uplands area, Northeast Mesa, as well as on Frazier, more in, in Central Mesa. The original authorization allowed staff to dim lights to 50% of normal power levels. Actually, the work that Nathan and his team did, working with our consultant, we found that in some parts of the city, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, we felt comfortable going down to 25% power level and council authorized us to do that. This pilot expires at the end of this year. In addition, we've had some public meetings and we've taken survey comments from folks as well. As we were working on our dimming pilot, we brought police and fire out in the dark, literally, to take a look at the 25% power level that we were proposing and tested in the Desert Uplands area, and they did not express any concerns at that time. As we were getting feedback from folks, both at the public meeting and a lot of phone calls to Nathan and emails, in particular on Ellsworth Road, because the streetlights are in the median, we were concerned about spillover. It's easy to put a back shield on a streetlight, but Nathan, his team worked with our consultant and actually designed a specialty wraparound shield for those lights. And that drove down the number of concerns that we received considerably, so I want to commend them for that. They literally designed something from scratch that dealt with the spillover issue, but still maintained the primary purpose for street lighting, which is to protect motorists and pedestrians. This is just one example, and this relates to the dimming recommendations where we use traffic count data by time of day to try to establish a comfort level where dimming would be appropriate and at what times of night. So this is a map, just a graphic showing that we are proposing four lighting areas. Lighting zone one is the Lehigh area, and again, Desert Uplands in Northeast Mesa. Lighting zone two is where we have development agreements that spell out the lighting, so those are in Southeast Mesa. Lighting zone three is the bulk of the city, and lighting zone four are highly trafficked areas, both for vehicles and pedestrians.
I got a question on RJ.
Yes.
What do the different zones reflect? I didn't catch that part.
So what the zones really reflect is traffic, you know, in volumes and activity as well as ambient light. So what you'll see a couple of slides later is we have different power levels that we're proposing to reduce light to, as well as times of day.
I'll wait till the future slides.
Okay. So again, this is lighting zone one, so we would propose that on the arterial streets, I'm going from the bottom up actually, that from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM, again, as I mentioned, that we've developed a comfort level that could, we could reduce power levels down to 25% of their normal level and still maintain vehicular and pedestrian safety. The collectors, the same time period, but we would reduce to 45%. And then no dimming on the, the local streets. In Lehigh in particular, Vice American helped me with this, there are lights at the intersections, but we don't have lights for the most part on the streets themselves.
That's correct, and we like it that way.
I understand. I grew up, I grew up in a town where if you said streetlight, you'd be run out, so I do understand that part of the city. Lighting zone two, again, this is the Eastmark Cadence Morrison Ranch where there are development agreements, but we would still propose that from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM, we could reduce power down to as much as 45, 45% of, of normal standards. What's important to note, and we'll jump ahead on this, is that this assumes we've converted the lights from high pressure sodium to LED. The current lights, which is the bulk of our system, cannot be dimmed, so hold, hold that thought. And then again, the bulk of the city would start a little later in the evening, starting at 11 rather than 10, and then a comfort level of reducing down to 45% of, of, of normal power levels. And we could show you council members if you're interested in how we did the analysis, but again, it was really driven by, by traffic. And then lighting zone four, again, we would start a little later even on the arterial, starting at midnight, and push the lights back up a little earlier at 4:00 AM, but also taking that down to 45%. This is just a snapshot of our existing inventory. So we are, Nate and his team, plus CIP projects, plus development, we're adding to our LED inventory, but the bulk of our system is still high pressure sodium, which would need to be upgraded to allow for the potential of dimming in the future. Smart nodes, this is how we do it. So once the, the light is converted from high pressure sodium to LED, you need a way to talk to the light, so this is simply replacing photocells. And right now, that's just a switch, you know, that, that's on and off. This would allow Nate and his team to remotely not only dim the lights, but see how effective the lights are. Where right now, we rely on residents or businesses to say that a streetlight's out or one of Nate's team members patrolling, you know, in the dark to look for outages. We would actually be able to see, you know, remotely what the condition of each individual streetlight is. And we can then work to generate work orders automatically and that sort of thing. So there's two options to move forward in terms of the conversion. The first is what we're calling mass conversion with debt financing, and this is to replace the entire inventory of high pressure sodium and metal halide lights as one project with an outside contractor. So if you add the process, the, the labor and material upfront plus interest, you have a range of between 14.6 and 17.5 million. But this does not include adding the smart nodes, which again are needed if you want the ability to dim. Our consultant found that it would take about 16 years using SRP rates to pay, pay back the cost of this. So the concern we have with this is the, the estimate is that these lights have about a 20-year life expectancy, but we haven't been 20 years with LEDs. So that's just an estimate. So even in this case, we're pushing towards the end, you know, of, of the lifecycle, you know, of the streetlights. So option two is a phased-in conversion using in-house staff. So this drops the cost significantly. We would not need to add staff to do this because we have the, the employees. So really what you're looking at is labor, which would drop the cost down to just under $7 million. In addition to this, however, we would had to add, add another 10 million to add the smart nodes. So we believe that we can incorporate the 6.8 million over seven years into our budget with existing resources. We still have to look at how we would finance or fund the, the smart nodes. But in addition to the significantly reduced cost of, of the, the replacement, by stretching out the conversion period, it'll allow us to follow technology and see what changes as, you know, the, the fixtures themselves. If you asked me 10 years ago if there was any payback, I would have said no. It actually would have cost money to convert the system. So it'll allow us to follow technology. The other benefit is that we're not doing a single replacement of our entire system all at once, which means 15 to 20 years from now, the entire system starts to fail all at once. So we think for a number of reasons, this is the right way to approach the conversion, and that's what we will be recommending to council.
I have a question, RJ. Why are, why are we only replacing or putting smart nodes in two specific areas and pushing out zones two, three, and four for the rest?
We've already started, council member, we've already started in lighting zone one, which again is Lehigh and, and Desert Uplands, so we can, we can support that. So, but to do the rest of the city is where we would need the additional $10 million.
Okay.
And again, to stress, no labor costs are included in this cost estimate because we've got the, the staff budgeted. So with that, our recommendation is option two, a seven-year in-house conversion of the streetlights, ideally moving to LED. And then should council agree with our recommendation, we would be bringing in ordinance forward for your consideration in mid-November. That would make some code changes to support the dimming. Please note that, you know, our public outreach efforts have been very focused on Desert Uplands and a very small area on Frazier. The, the proposed ordinance will allow us to dim, but not require us to dim, because we may get different feedback in different parts of the city, you know, as, as we move forward. And so the, the proposed ordinance will allow flexibility, but we'll set the minimums that we're allowed to dim to. So I know I talk fast, but if you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you. Jeremy?
I know one of the issues is that SRP owns the lights, right? So even though the LEDs are way more efficient than the high pressure sodium, we don't necessarily recognize, or I thought that we didn't necessarily recognize the cost advantage of the savings of electricity. Is that still the case, or has SRP changed their stance as far as what they're willing to do?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, and Nate can jump in and help me with this. The, the prior rate structure for LED lights, there's what we call rate buckets. So there were bans of, so if it was 0 to 75 watts, you fell within a certain rate tier. So you could reduce the wattage by the conversion to LED, but still be within the same rate tier. So we weren't recovering any savings. The new rate structure, while they created additional rate buckets, as we call them, they raised their fixed fees per pole, which they lowered one and raised the other, and so the, the payback is not as much as, as, as we would have hoped. From a practical standpoint, we have to change. The high pressure sodium fixtures are going away, or the, you know, so anything more than a bulb replacement right now, we're taking down the high pressure sodium fixture and putting up an LED fixture. It's like the incandescent bulb. So we're, the technology has to change because it's simply not going to be available, the old technology, and this is our recommendation on how to do it.
And so SRP doesn't actually own, I guess I'm confused by, so we're responsible for placing the light head, but SRP, but we still have to pay SRP for the pole and everything? I don't understand that. I don't understand that.
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, we own the poles, and in many parts of the city, we actually own the electric distribution system as well. So we're paying SRP to provide the energy, but we're, the entire system is owned by the City of Mesa.
And we're not allowed to provide our own electricity to these lights? It has to come from SRP?
It's, we have the two service areas, City of, sorry.
Sure, outside of the downtown area. Okay. And the other question I have is, on those smart nodes, is that, is the company we're going through to purchase the smart nodes, like obviously, why, I'm assuming that's a wireless technology?
Yes.
That technology changes drastically year over year. I can't imagine those smart nodes will still be around in 16 years, right? I mean, I'm...
The system we've landed on right now is a Phillips system called City?
City Touch.
City Touch, and it's a 10-year warranty. Go ahead, Nathan.
It's a 10-year warranty, and as they update their technology, they continue to update the nodes that we get from them year by year, so.
But part of the benefit, as I said earlier, is the seven-year conversion cycle will allow us to follow technology. I agree, we don't want to lock in on something for 20 years because it's moving pretty quickly. But we've tested several systems, and this is the one we feel most comfortable with right now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Luna, then Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyway, RJ, thank you so much. I know that there are a lot of residents that are very passionate in the Desert Uplands in terms of lighting in that area, and your staff has worked incredibly hard to certainly satisfy them and for to meet their needs. And so I know that you responded just recently, in fact, to the issue related to some of the spillage from the lighting. So as far as I'm concerned, I think those have been met. I think this is, these are great recommendations, and I would, I'm going to support moving forward on this.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
RJ, thank you, Councilmember Luna. I feel the same way. I wrote down some notes, I did like PowerPoint number 2, that talks about developing and changing standards within new developments and communities, and incorporating lighting, new lighting opportunities for neighborhoods, because some people like the light, others do not, or as much of the light. So I like the ability to dim and create different standards for different communities. But I also support SAT's recommendation with the option 2, seven-year in-house conversion. Thanks.
Thank you. I support the staff recommendation as well. I'm seeing some heads nod. Do we need a motion on this, Mr. Smith, to provide direction, or?
No.
Okay. Would it be fair to say that that's the consensus that we like, option 2, council? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. I know this has been a project that's been years in the making to get to this point, so thank you for all the work this kind of is. The next item on our agenda, item 3, is to acknowledge receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Yes?
I have a really quick question. Chris, can you look into item 4B for me, please? I have concerns that we're going outside or going against our city charter, so could you please take a look at that?
Yeah, we'll take a look. Get that and see if that's a board that's available to be stood up, so.
Thank you.
Do that.
Okay. Is there a motion on the boards and board minutes? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Passing unanimously. Item 4, so here are reports on meetings and conferences attended. Who would like to share what they've been up to? Mr. Freeman?
I'll jump in, Mayor. Thank you. Earlier, we had the groundbreaking for the union, and a number of us were there, and I'm excited about the union and the economic development out there. I also attended the flu shot clinic with Mesa Fire, and it kind of took me back to the day when this program started. I think it started about 1999, somewhere in there, because I was fresh out of paramedic school, being an old firefighter. And so we were, we did a lot of immunizations, and I would be curious how many immunizations the department has done from the time of inception until today. I mean, you said 4,000 shots in four days. I mean, that's awesome. You know, we're keeping more kids healthy during flu season, and many of us got that as well. Hey, I was impressed Thursday, I went to the Fuel of Dreams with PD, the fundraiser in my district, and had a great time with Commander Bellows and others, Officer Detective John Fitzgerald, and they just did an awesome job, and Commander Bellows, he was, I mean, he's great to work with, I appreciate him. I can't again say enough, on Saturday, I participated in a code compliance volunteer project by Lieutenant Ryan Russell and the code compliance team. Instead of giving out a notice of violation, they reached out to a member in my district that needed help, and it was a huge cleanup. I don't know if we could get a picture, but I asked if a picture could be put up here, but regardless, a lot of great work was done by, there were 20 volunteers from the ASU Naval ROTC program, eight code compliance staff members, four members from Ladder 201 at Station 201 came and used their chainsaws. Solid Waste participated, the mothers battling cancer, and they removed 10 tons of debris and vegetation from the home, and it was a great project. Then Saturday, I participated over at the reopening of the Mesa Grande Cultural Park, Grub and Grub, and that was interesting to see, the old historical ruin there. And then on November 5th, I have a town hall over at Poston Junior High, so, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Yes, I've had a busy week. Saturday, I attended the Arizona chapter of Army Aviation Heritage Foundation over at Falcon Field Airport. That was well-attended, and it keeps on growing bigger and bigger. So acknowledges our Vietnam veterans and what they did and their war effort in. So it's a great program. There's a number of helicopters that they bring in and share with the community, so we want to continue honoring our Vietnam War veterans. We, many of us attended Dia de los Muertos festival this weekend. Cindy tells me there was 20,000 people there, and many of my colleagues were there, and we had a really good time there. Also had an opportunity with Christine Zalanka and Carrie Kent, as well as Chris Brey, our city manager, to visit the Fat Cats Theater and Recreation Area, which is very exciting. It's got eight theaters, it's going to have 839 seats, I believe, and it's an arcade, it's going to be totally cool. It's going, it's located on Wrecker and right south of the 202, so excited about that. Also did the Halloween Boo reading over at the Red Mountain branch at the library, and that was a lot of fun. And I also joined Ryan yesterday and for a code compliance team cleanup, and that was a great event, and I appreciate Ryan for his and his team for their efforts in trying to help our community. And then, of course, I have to acknowledge Carrie Kent, and Councilmember Duff and I attended a wonderful event, recognizing Carrie Kent for Women Achievers of Arizona War Recognition. And so thank you, Carrie, for your contribution to the City of Mesa and all that you do, and I want to make sure that we do acknowledge, did acknowledge you. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Thompson?
Sorry. Wanted to also thank Stephanie Derbin, giving her props for all her work and helping. I had a constituent whose husband committed suicide, and the vehicle was in his name, it got towed, obviously. She was trying to get the vehicle back into her custody and was going through some issues, and Stephanie stepped up and helped her get the vehicle back, which was one less issue that she had to worry about in her crisis, in her climate crisis. Also, like Vice Mayor Freeman, we had the Fuel of Dreams out in District 6. Had a lot of fun hanging out with Lieutenant Soler and the guys from Superstition. It was a lot of fun that night, a little bit chilly, but it was a lot of fun. And then last night, big thank you to the Superstition precinct folks, and to Alicia, and to Desert Ridge High School Student Council. We put together and held our fifth annual trunk-or-treat in the district for the community, and it was another success. So thank you, thank everyone for braving the cold winds last night and the weather and coming out, bringing the little ones, the smiles on their face was well worth it, so thank you everybody for your efforts.
Thank you. Frankie?
Real quick, big shout out to the Mesa Fire Department. This past Saturday, in District 3, around the Adams Elementary neighborhood, we installed over 182 smoke alarms. There was about over 100 volunteers that went into the neighborhood. I think America Red Cross, the Burn Foundation, Skyline ROTC, a group of students, ASU students, a lot of other, even the Fire Chief's husband was out there. So we want to thank everybody for coordinating that event. It's something that we normally don't think about, our smoke alarms, but does definitely save lives if, when a situation happens in your home, and those are working, so greatly appreciate your all's support on that end, so thank you.
Jen?
Of course, I have a list, but Councilmember Thompson, did you want to bring, talk about the Sky Bridge? No, go ahead. I mean, I haven't. I think that's significant for your district.
Yeah, it was a big deal. I want to thank everyone that came out, Councilmember Luna and Jen, and Vice Mayor Freeman was a little bit late. I think everybody was already walking away by the time you got there.
I made the picture.
Mayor, thank you for being there, but yeah, we had the groundbreaking for the first phase of Sky Bridge out at Gateway Airport. Their first phase is going to be 140,000 square foot, 240,000 square foot buildings combined space. But it's a big deal for Gateway because obviously, as the Gateway Airport is doing so much business now, we've run out of hangar space and office space, and they're bringing both in during this first phase. So it's a big deal for Gateway Airport and for the region. Thank you, Jen, for being there.
I think it's significant not only for Mesa in general, but for the entire Southwest and possibly nationally. Very busy week. Last Thursday, I attended the MCC's Hall of Fame, and I just wanted to point out, the retired CEO of East Valley Partnership, Brock Garnett, was inducted to the Mesa Community College Hall of Fame, as well as retired Police Chief John Mesa. On Friday, I attended the Mesa Chamber of Commerce Green Flag 24-Hour Business Challenge, and it took students who were challenged to prepare a business plan within 24 hours, is an overnight thing with guidance for professionals to map their dreams. This is right here in downtown, it's an exciting, as well as Zen Nights. Thank you, Mayor, for attending this vegan festival. On Saturday, I attended the Mesa Historical Cemetery Tour. Fascinating, and the leaders and families and their stories and people related to those people who are laid to rest there, and the famous people and history that's there, which I also just dropped in at the Mesa Historical Museum also, and they have the Stitching Mesa Together exhibit, which has fantastic history of stitchery crafts and lace and everything, but the quilts there are remarkable and have a huge amount of history, and you'll recognize a lot of names embroidered on those quilts and how they're put together. Also on Saturday, I attended the Asian Chamber of Commerce, the Kamayan Feast, which is very interesting, the first time for me, banana leaves, food, eat with your hands. But the reason I was there is to make a proclamation for October, recognizing October as Filipino-American History Month. Yesterday, or Tuesday, it feels like yesterday, I was at the Never Too Old Conference, put on by the Arizona Public Health Association, and recognizing that transportation provides social equality for all ages and all abilities, and thank you. Want to recognize Carrie again for her achievement, very proud to have her in Mesa, and really look up to her achievements. Wanted to wish everybody a safe and fun Halloween tonight. Please drive slow and cautious, and be cautious out there, there's little ones, and they're on the streets. And reverting back to the ASU design presentation that we had, the community meeting is Wednesday, Art Space, 6:00 PM. There is an event on the Rail Mesa Facebook page with the details on there, so again, want to encourage the community to attend and express their opinions and ideas about that ASU in downtown Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you. It has been a busy week, and I appreciate the opportunity to join with many of you at the activities you just mentioned. I do want to add additional emphasis to the importance of the Sky Bridge event on Monday. I think that's something I'm proud of, the way the city and the airport have worked on that for the last couple of years. The, and that's again, something that will, it is a national, if not international, story, and Mesa will be on the tip of everyone's tongue when it comes to describing trade between Mexico and the United States going forward. So that's, that's something I'll be very proud of. Dia de los Muertos also, couldn't have been better. The Council General was there, and Waldo, Waldo people, if you have, in the past, if you've missed this, please, you know, do yourself a favor, make sure you make it to the Mesa Dia de los Muertos. That's one of the hashtag Why I Live in Mesa events that everybody needs to experience. Also, I joined with complimenting our police department in the Fuel of Dreams event. I was really impressed with what great, friendly, likable police officers we had when they walked up to people's cars and said, you know, can we wash your windshield and pump your gas? You know, they were charming, and it was a very good event. It was easy to see on a one-to-one level how likable our police officers are, I was very proud of them. So thank you for all the good work that's gone on. I don't want to steal Mr. Brady's thunder, but I do want to make sure that we, make sure people understand that this weekend, we're laying to rest Charles Lester, who is a very important person when it comes to the history of the City of Mesa, was our city manager for decades, and we all owe a tremendous debt of gratitude to Mr. Lester. So Friday night, there's a viewing at Bunkers. Saturday morning, the funeral services are at the LDS Stake Center at 1550 North Val Vista at 10:00 AM on Saturday mornings, and we need to make sure that he and his family feel the appreciation of our city this weekend. So, thank you. I hope I didn't take that off of your platter, Mr. Brady.
Yeah, I think you said it all very well, Mayor, so it's good. So yeah, Bunkers from 6:00 to 8:00 on Friday, and the funeral services, as you mentioned, 10:00 AM, 1550 North Val Vista Drive. So remarkable man, we still call him Mr. Lester. So 43 years service of the city, 21 as city manager, that's unheard of, so. Then, just a reminder to council, we have a study session, a council meeting on Monday and November 4th. Thank you very much.
Mr. Freeman, remind me, there's a viewing prior to the funeral as well for Mr. Lester. Yeah. Great. If there's nothing else, council, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.